Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of November 12th, 2003 of Port Clinton City Council. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, the Lord's Prayer, and a moment of silence for our man and woman serving overseas. And please keep in your hearts and minds that the home is made of.
I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Father, our Son, our Holy Spirit, our Lord and our Savior, our God and our Father, our God and our Saviour, our God and our Father, our God and our Saviour, our Father and our Son. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil; for thine is the kingdom, and thy power, and thy glory, forever and ever. Thank you. Would the Court please call the roll? Mark Topler.
Present.
Ron Ackerman.
Present.
Deborah Benko.
Present.
Kathy Mel.
Present.
Mike Snyder.
Present.
Nicole DeFrias.
Present.
Margaret Phillips.
Present.
Thank you. Tonight you have the minutes from the October 22nd meeting. Do I have a motion to accept those minutes as written?
Sub move, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Snyder. Do I have a second? I'll second that. Thank you, Ms. Mel. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The Chair notes of certification has been received regarding compliance with the laws and notification of this meeting. You were given several ordinances and resolutions tonight as you came in, so we'll give you those numbers before we get too far into the meeting. An ordinance authorizing and directing the Director of Safety and Service and the curbside pickup and disposal is 38-13. The amended and reinstated ordinance of the Council of City of Port Clinton, which starts that way, is 39-13, and the resolution number is 13-04. And we will now go to the main reports.
Thank you, Madam President. We have one thing I'd like to say, and that's just to thank the community. It was really inspiring to see a community come together and support their own. I think we're truly blessed to live in Port Clinton, and this is exactly what Port Clinton does here. So I can tell you, as the Madam President, I am of the community, like, I have the privilege to represent. That is all, Madam President.
Thank you. Auditor's report.
Thank you, Madam President. Just a reminder, I sent out the October November reports on November 1st. If anyone on Council did not receive or have any of those, please let me know, and I'll be sure to get them to you very well.
Thank you. Treasurer's report.
Madam President, I have additional money that's come in from federal taxes. We now have a total of $133,895.13, and the same two that I mentioned last meeting, I've not paid any more money.
Law directors' report.
Nothing.
Safety service directors' report.
Thank you, Madam President. Sixth Street, as you can see, is pretty much done. They have some manholes that they are putting concrete collared around. That's what you see out there. They've also started marking the street for striping. They're going to still try to stripe it yet this year. Along with the striping on Sixth Street, they'll be doing striping for the Safe Routes for Schools, so Alice, and the other end of Sixth, and all that stuff will be taken care of. Jefferson also. Half Street is in pretty good shape. I don't know if everybody's been down that way. They still have some restoration work to do on the curb and boulevard area. Concrete's been poured, and asphalt's pretty well laid there. The one you see on the very corner is Safe Routes for Schools, so that will be finished within that project. That project's going pretty well. The only issues we have with that is, there's a couple spots we have to do some telephone polls on Madison and Alice, and those will probably be another couple weeks before those polls begin to move to finish up that project, if I'm not wrong about that. We are also starting at the Nature Reserve Trail, we'll call it, up at Water Works. Shawn Kelly got the contract for that. We'll see some work up in that area for the walking path, starting probably this week. He probably already even got his stuff moved up there. Little confusion, I guess, but leaf pickups started today. We'll do Ward 1 today, Ward 2 tomorrow, Ward 3, Ward 4, and so on. Starting next Monday, we start on Ward 1, but we may get into Ward 2 on Monday also. So if you have them out there, we certainly will. What we try to do is go back and spot check in the ward we're supposed to be at. So if we do 1 and 2 on Monday, we would come back on Tuesday and start in to and spot check these places, and then go to 3 and continue on. In the past, they used to just do half a day or whatever, do a ward, and we are not doing that. We're making it a full day, continuing on through with that. So that is the way the pickups will go. Fountains and Fritchy Road and some of the apartment places that we pick up, we do on Fridays. So that's kind of where we stand with that project. That's all I have for the morning, President.
Thank you. Police chief's report.
Nothing tonight, Madam President. Thank you.
Fire chief's report.
Nothing, Your Honor, Madam President.
Under correspondence, this evening I have the tree commission minutes of 10:08:13, and the auditor's October report, which you received by email. Do I have a motion to accept the correspondence as stated?
Sub move, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Snyder. Second, Ms. Phillips. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We will now go to the reading of ordinances and resolutions. We have no third readings tonight. Under second readings, would the Court please read by title and summary only, ordinance 36-13? Ornance 36-13, an ordinance adopting and approving the Personnel Policy and Procedure Manual of the City of Port Clinton and declaring an emergency. Does Council wish to take any action this evening on ordinance 36-13? Seeing none, we will move that to the November 26th meeting for its third and final reading. Under first readings of ordinance and resolutions, would the Court please read by title and summary only on ordinance 37-13? Ornance 37-13, an ordinance authorizing and directing the Director of Safety and Service to request a loan from the Ohio Water Development Authority for funds for Fulton Street Reconstruction and Waterline Replacement Project and declaring an emergency. Does Council wish to take any action this evening on ordinance 37-13? Seeing none, we will move that to the November 26th meeting for its second reading. Would the Court please read by title and summary only, ordinance 38-13? Oh, I'm sorry, we haven't added one to the agenda yet. Thank you, Mr. Wilber. I would now entertain a motion to add ordinance 38-13, ordinance 39-13, and Resolution 13-04 to tonight's agenda.
Sub move, Madam President.
Do I have a second? Are you seconding any? Nobody else is. Thank you, Ms. Phillips. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Now will the Court please read by title and summary only, ordinance 38-13? Ornance 38-13, an ordinance authorizing and directing the Director of Safety and Service to enter into a contract for the curbside pickup and disposal of garbage, rubbish, yard waste, and recyclable material. Does Council wish to take any action this evening on ordinance 38-13?
Madam President, I move that we waive the three required readings on 38-13.
I have a motion to waive the three required readings on ordinance number 38-13. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Ackerman. Any discussion on the waiving of the readings? Seeing none, will the Court please call the roll? Ron Ackerman.
Yes.
Kathy Mel.
Yes.
Nicole DeFrias.
Yes.
Margaret Phillips.
Yes.
Mark Topler.
Yes.
Mike Snyder.
Yes.
Deborah Benko.
Yes.
Thank you. Does Council wish to take any further action on ordinance number 38-13? Madam President, we wish to retain the emergency clause on 38-13. We have the.
Oh.
Okay. You're just going to waive and adopt?
We would like to make, well, first, okay, we'd like to make a motion to pass 38-13.
I have a motion to adopt ordinance 38-13. Do I have a second?
I'll second that, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Ackerman. Any discussion?
The infrastructure committee recommends passage of ordinance 38-13, and I have a paper of signature, like, ready.
Any further discussion on ordinance number 38-13, Mr. Snyder?
Thank you, Madam President. Just to follow up to that, the city has been without a contract for waste disposal in residential areas for some time now. We looked at a couple different contracts. The committee, as you see, recommended going with the company we see here and the company we've been using for years. There are going to be some minor changes and some improvements to the service that will be provided. Correct me if I'm wrong, folks that looked at everything as well. One of those is that the service company is going to provide a 96-gallon disposal, wheel, two-wheeled trash container for rubbish, and another 96-gallon container for recyclables. The rubbish will be picked up weekly, the recyclables every other week. They're going to go through a training program to make sure that they're placed in the proper spot, because the trucks will now be completely automated. The driver won't get out of the vehicle unless they absolutely have to. Likewise, the vehicles will be lighter in weight, so they won't put as much wear and tear on the streets in the community. The bag service that many of the citizens use will still be available, should you choose. And, Madam Committee?
There'll be a town hall meeting for everybody to go to, all the changes.
Unfortunately, none of the companies that we talked to, and it kind of seems to be the trend, at least in what I've been reading, no one offers unlimited trash pickup at the moment. So if you have a larger item, or you're cleaning out your house for whatever reason, go ahead and give the company a call, and they'll make the special arrangements. There will be a slight adjustment to the bill for those larger items.
And they'll also be providing dumpsters in fall and spring for the residents to dispose of blocked items.
Any further discussion?
There is a senior discount as well, correct?
Correct.
The contract?
And we can still use blue bags?
Yes.
If we don't have 96 gallons of trash?
That was very important to the committee, and so we made sure that that was, stayed in there, and, yeah.
And where will these clothes be purchased? Do we know yet?
Don't know for sure. I'm assuming it'll stay the same as how it is now. I don't think there's going to be any changes with that.
Anything else this evening? The Court please call the roll. Margaret Phillips.
Yes.
Mark Topler.
Yes.
Nicole DeFrias.
Yes.
Ron Ackerman.
Yes.
Mike Snyder.
Yes.
Deborah Benko.
Yes.
Kathy Mel.
Yes.
Thank you. Ordnance 38-13 has been adopted. Would the Court please read by title and summary only, ordinance 39-13? Ornance 39-13, amended and restated ordinance of the City of, the Council of the City of Port Clinton, Ottawa County, Ohio, required by the Ohio Police and Fire Pension Fund to continue the pickup program for the city employees covered by the Ohio Police and Fire Pension Fund. Does Council wish to take any action this evening on ordinance 39-13? Seeing none, we will move that to the November 26th meeting for its second reading. Would the Court please read by title and summary only, Resolution 13-04? Resolution 13-04, resolution opposing the proposed deep geologic repository for low and intermediate level radioactive waste near Canadian Carters, Ontario, or other underground repository near the shores of any of the Great Lakes, including connecting yard waste and declaring emergency. Does Council wish to take any action this evening on Resolution number 13-04? Seeing none, we will move that to the November 26th meeting for its second reading. We will now go to business from the floor. Mr. Topler.
Thank you, Madam President. I too would like to express my condolences to the family from the classmates of Devon Coleman. Secondly, congratulations to the winner of the last, of this last week's election, Cole, Margaret, Ron. During the wait till, you know, people were amazed, I guess, yes, sir. I'd also like to thank Cassie Anderson, Chris McCarty, and Bert Paul for their efforts in this last election. I think we had some very qualified candidates, and hopefully we'll see more of them in the Now that the election's over with, I hope that Mr. Rose and Washington Properties will have something sooner or later for the development of the waterworks property, the water proposal.
I was going to say something. At the end of the meeting, we have a meeting with Mr. Rose on the 21st.
Okay. Once there is something, will there be another public presentation like the last two meetings, so the public have a chance to read it?
There's a lot of different factors that are going on right now. You know, I went to the commissioners and asked for a grant to look for and fill in some of the loopholes for some of the homeless spaces and environmental stuff. Along with that, they were also wanting to use some of those funds to do the geo-pack, which would tell us how big those buildings are going to be, give us a lot more information so that we can put together a better proposal, as far as on the units, how big, how wide, all those things that matter as far as putting that proposal together. They, personally, I think it's very important that we have those facts, not go by guesswork. So that's pretty much the holdup right now, is getting those studies done, make sure there's no problems there, or they can't build at all.
I guess I'm not concerned with the buildup too, it's once you do have a water proposal, will there be another presentation, public presentation, so the public can read it? A month or two ago, there was talk about a city draft, where, where, it's like the administration, it's closer. We had a conversation with Mr. Wilber to find out if there's any legal issues with having a building have, and make sure that those questions are answered, and still things that we want to bring to the council, considering that. The other question I have is, as Finance Committee Chairman at this point, and as a taxpaying resident of Port Clinton, the building that you're acquiring about, actually is one of them I had mentioned to you, and you say, you stated at that infrastructure meeting, it had a $548,000 base price. The building right out here that's adjacent to the City Hall, or the City Hall parking lot, you said you weren't, you looked at that and you weren't interested, correct? Okay. Well, I mean, I checked with the Realtor, and no one remembers anybody from this administration looking at that building. And the price of that building's down to $180,000 right now. $368,000 less than one across the street. The parking lot is adjacent to this parking lot. Size-wise, they're about the same, and this building here is a year newer, just that it has the nice steel skin on it. So I guess I'm wondering, why, why are we willing to spend right off the bat an additional $368,000? Why have we considered this building here?
The building was considered, but obviously there's some height issues. We have big trucks that have been pulled inside here. A lot of the space is office space. I have been over in that building, and the maintenance guy has been in there, just taking a glance around. The outside structure needs a lot of tuck pointing, domed, some structural issues. These are, in my opinion, as a contractor, has not been verified by an engineer by any means. But we're looking at needs. The parking lot that you speak of is in an intergovernmental agreement to the county embassy, anything to go adjacent to that. The lot size was rather small.
It's actually, excuse me, it's actually four tons of nature bigger than the one across the street.
Four tons of, what are you speaking of? The building itself? You're talking about the lot itself?
The lots, the lots.
I'd have to look at that information.
Well, I've got the audit reports right here, if you want to see them. But it's actually, you know, if you take the, if you take the offices out of it, I just think it's, I just can't understand, especially since we're talking budget, we're talking that we have less revenue, and we aren't giving that serious consideration. I think the, I think the administration should give that some serious, serious consideration. $368,000 is all I know.
Well, and I'll agree with you, with that. And you know, set committees are also looking at this.
Okay, then, I'll ask the infrastructure committee, how you guys look at this one?
No, we've not looked at it, but we're waiting for George to make his decision and get back to us on that, and that was, it stopped at that point. We haven't moved any further on it.
Have you looked at, have you looked at the other ones?
No, we have not. We haven't, yeah.
All right. I just think it's a little bit.
At least haven't got to that point, I guess. Like, I mean, we were at the last meeting that that was discussed when we took a tour over there. That was the last time I should have discussed an infrastructure.
But I think it's probably something you should look into. There will be a Finance Committee meeting next Tuesday at 6:30. And finally, happy birthday, Jim.
Thank you.
That's it, Madam President.
Thank you. Mr. Ackerman.
Nothing, Madam President. Thank you very much.
Ms. Benko. I'm sorry, did you hear?
I said nothing tonight, Madam President.
Oh, thank you. Mrs. Mel.
Well, there will be a wall's ordinance meeting on November 26th, and that's right, at 6:30, right before the Supreme Court's going to read the concept. And my condolences to the Devon Coleman family, and my two most proud folks that are pulling together, it's really great. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Mr. Snyder.
Thank you, Madam President. As we all know, it's almost upon us the holiday season, and the Salvation Army is in desperate need of assistance with bell ringers. If you, as an individual, as a family, as a group, an organization, would be interested in ringing the bell at any one of the four locations throughout the community, that number is 419-732-2769, 732-2769, and they can make those arrangements. And it just so happens, I volunteered this, to ring the Salvation Army bell on Friday, December 6th, at the community market, and I have a sign-up sheet, two-hour increments from 10 until 6, 10 a.m. until 6 p.m. I know a few of you have already signed up, but it's open to anybody, and we'll throw it out to the audience as well, because you're here just as much as we are, for many of you. So please feel free to sign up, and I'll send a email out to everyone that signs up to go from there. There will be an Emergency Services Committee meeting following, or, excuse me, preceding the Finance Committee meeting next Tuesday at 5:30. A tip from the chief this week comes from Chief Kent Johnson. Eight, nine, 10 days ago, we all fell back, as the clock goes, and hopefully we all changed our alarms, or our batteries in our smoke alarms and CO2 detectors, so if you haven't, please go ahead and change those batteries. If you need some assistance, the chief is always willing to have me volunteer to do stuff, so give him a call, and he'll, he'll help you. 419-734-3430 is the fire station, 734-3430. If you're not there, leave a message, and we'll get back to you. Thank you.
Mrs. DeFrias.
I have a little second, Madam President.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips. I am on the Tree Commission with Mr. Teroli and Mr. Coleman and Ms. Bonnetto, and the mayor is on there. Tomorrow, they will be receiving their certificates as members of the graduated class of the Tree Commission Academy from Ohio State, so they should be commended for it. Going through all that paperwork after they've not been in school in a long time. That's the first thing. The second thing, I was interested, Mr. Topler, what are the two amounts that you gave for that building, which is on this lot behind us here, on the same side?
This one? $180,000.
And what was the other one?
$548,000.
Okay. That's all. I've been out looking at trees and herds and aprons and things of that sorts since I, since the last meeting, but that's about all for now, thank you.
And the Tree Commission Academy ceremony will take place tomorrow, here in City Hall, from 11:30, if anybody's interested in attending.
Can I ask you, where's that certification coming from?
The Tree, you should think, University of Cincinnati.
No.
Is it Ohio State?
I believe it is.
State of Ohio.
Members of the audience. I called on Vicki, but I'll continue, Judge.
Thank you for bringing Resolution 1304 regarding the Canadian address for the Court. I'm sorry?
You need to state your name and address for the Court.
I'm sorry. Vicki. Clemmons. 330 East Perry. Thank you for Resolution 1304, bringing the Canadian issue to Council. Hopefully, it can be moved along quickly. I do want to let everyone know that I spoke with Chris Redfern. He is bringing it, the issue, to the Lake Erie Caucus, and reminded me that the Lake Erie Caucus is only seven people. So it's up to us in seven districts to educate the rest of Ohio, because they aren't aware of the issues for Lake Erie. Once Port Clinton can pass a resolution, I plan to go to Marcy Cafter and say, will you now have three cities in your district? Could you please join the Michigan United States representatives that today made their declarations? So this is a very long process, and it's grassroots, and we're going to do it. Thank you.
Madam President, Mr. Mayor, and honorable members of council, good evening.
Name and address.
My name is Paul Noon. I live in Port Clinton, 1192 Lee Street. Some of you may remember me. I've served on City Council in the past. I've been president of the City Council, and then for the last 30 years, I've been a judge in this county. I'm sure you all know that a judge is not permitted to speak out on political issues or issues of great public interest of the day. Accordingly, so that I can address you here this evening, I have withdrawn from all judging assignments in the several counties in Ohio where I've been a visiting judge since retiring here in 2009. In addition, I've directed the Supreme Court of Ohio to place my license to practice law on inactive status, so that you don't need to speculate about who I represent here tonight. I represent myself. I speak only on my own behalf. My opinions are mine alone. Some of you won't agree, but so be it. I respectfully request 10 minutes to complete my statement.
I will give that to you.
All right. Thank you. I've written down what I want to say, and I hope you will forgive me for reading to you, but I feel so passionately on these matters that I know if I get off script, I'm going to lose it. I have a very deep interest in what happens to Port Clinton generally, and what happens to the waterfront specifically, as well I might. My family has lived in what is now Ottawa County since 1809. I've lived all my 76 years in Port Clinton, except the time I spent in military service. I care a lot about this place, and I'm afraid that if you proceed to sell or lease public lands for private purposes, you'll be making a very big mistake. First of all, it's a bad idea. Secondly, I don't think you can do it legally. And thirdly, if you could do it, you shouldn't do it. Let me explain. The founder of Port Clinton, Ezekiel Smith Haynes, filed his town plat in 1828, and provided that, and I am now quoting, "The space embraced between, between Perry Street and the lake, and extending from Jefferson Street to Washington Street is to remain open forever. The space called the North Park is to be appropriated to the use and enjoyment of all the residents of the town as a public park." Now, at the time, Haynes made this declaration. He was not only the father of Port Clinton, but he had been the surveyor general of the entire Northwest Territory, Ohio, Michigan, Illinois, Indiana, and Wisconsin. So we have to assume that he knew what he was talking about. The fact that the land between Jefferson and Washington, north of Perry, was added to over time, does not change matters at all. The plat restrictions apply to all that land. Title to the land was reserved by Haynes to himself. Now, there are two court cases which deal with this land. In the Hitchcock case in 1910, the Court of Appeals ruled that the parties could not stop the building of an addition to the waterworks, because they didn't object to the original waterworks 16 years earlier. The court also ruled that the plaintiffs are not The court also ruled that the plaintiffs are not prohibited from filing to restrain the erection of further permanent buildings which interfere with said open space not connected to the operation of the waterworks. Clearly, the court permitted the building of the waterworks and its extension because it was for a valid municipal purpose. Selling or leasing the land to a private party is not a valid municipal purpose. And in any event, the open forever language still applies and would apply to any eventual buyer or lesssee. The second case is the Danny Schnitzler case from 1985. Much is made of the Schnitzler case, but its ruling was very limited. Schnitzler stands for the very limited proposition that those owners abutting in south of Perry Street between Jefferson and Washington have no rights in the land north of Perry Street greater than those of all the residents of the city. The issue of whether buildings could be erected on that area was simply not before the court. Therefore, the language in the opinion about buildings and public hearings and ownerships means nothing. The court spoke beyond the authority it had to decide the very limited issue of warfage, and the added language has no force in effect. And since it was a settlement, not a decision based on facts or findings, it binds only the parties to that case. No zoning or rezoning can override the town plat provisions. And you might wish to know that the present owner of that land is not the city of Port Clinton, but rather the heirs of Ezekiel Smith Haynes. I'm sure this is not a surprise to at least some of you, but if you don't own it, folks, you can't sell it. If you don't own it, you can't lease it. Ladies and gentlemen, the lake and the waterfront are our inheritance as residents of Port Clinton, a gift from God and Ezekiel Smith Haynes, if you will. The land is what distinguishes us from a cornfield crossroads town in Butler or Van Work Counties, or from a little town hanging on the side of a mountain in Appalachian. The lakefront should not be viewed as a seaside albatross just to be gotten rid of. A long time ago, President Lincoln said regarding a much more serious issue, "First, we must disenthrall ourselves, and then we will save our country." Today, we would say, "Think outside the box." I urge you all to disenthrall yourselves. Get outside the eye of the hurricane and look back objectively on what you have here. Does that mean we should do nothing to the area? Certainly not, but be thoughtful and imaginative. Port Clinton deserves better than a cookie cutter condo quick fix. Imagine, if you will, a spectacular mile-long sand beach anchored by Waterworks Park on one end and Lakeview Park on the other. And also fantasize a little bit that that beach is cleaned up. With appropriate amenities, thoughtful landscaping, parking, and then factor in what the Corps of Engineers is doing to the wetlands, you will attract thousands of users to that property. Just listen to what the editorial board of the Cleveland Plain Dealer said just October 25th about beaches. Beaches are a public good and can be a benefit for everyone. The beaches are a source of enjoyment for out-of-town visitors and for those from the local area looking for relaxation. For others who do not visit the beaches, revitalized beaches can bring an increase in tourism, which brings jobs, revenue, and business that can help a wavering city. I urge you to take a look at what other communities have done. I would suggest just four for your consideration. Take a look at for what a community can do for itself and by itself in terms of beautification and cooperation. For parks, visit New Philadelphia, Ohio. Take a look at what Bay Village has done with its Huntington Beach Park. Take your time. Time is on your side. Please use it wisely. In closing, this whole conversation regarding Waterworks Park can best be summed up in the words of a 1970 song by Canadian songstress Joni Mitchell called "The Big Yellow Taxi." In it, she laments, "They paved over paradise and put up a parking lot with a pink hotel, a boutique, and a swinging hot night spot. Don't it always seem to go that you don't know what you've got till it's gone?" Mr. Mayor, with all due respect, if this is your vision for the city of Port Clinton, we are all the poorer for it. But I'm an optimist. I feel confident that the members of this council are the next council, those with genuine courage and good sense will not let this happen to Port Clinton. Thank you.
Judge, is it possible to have a copy of that for the...
Oh, yes, I was going to submit that for the clerk.
Thank you.
So the chief's included in the minutes of the meeting.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this evening? Mr. Yelkey.
Gary Yelkey, 117 Cedar Street. I want to thank the judge for that concise report, and I just wondered if Mr. Wilber had a comment about that report before he really gets into studying it.
Give him some time.
Pardon me, sir? Okay, thank you. And I have a question for Tracy. Leaves picked up in the fourth ward. The Lakeview Park is a big offender of, you know, leaf drop. What, what do you guys got planned to...
Same thing, we'll bring our tractors over, pick it up, dump it in a pile, and suck it up.
How about into the park itself?
That's what I'm talking about.
Would you be cutting any grass, you know, cutting the leaves up or anything like that?
We'll just pick them up, put them in a pile, and then suck them up.
Okay, cool. The other day, in Waterworks Park, there was a transom set up with a naming stake. What was the meaning of that? Was the, was that part of the geotech study?
I couldn't say that, because I have no idea about that.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else this evening? Mr. Holman.
Larry Holman, 419 West 6. This is in regards to ordinance 18-13. Did they give a price set per year? Can you get a different contractor in, or will this all be announced at this public hearing meeting you spoke of?
For the garbage contract?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I don't know if I have the prices. I mean, it will be all gone. It'll all, yeah, it'll all be gone through at that, um, I don't know.
But you can use another contractor as well?
No, they would be exclusive to the city. That's the way of keeping the, the top there.
Anyone else this evening? Mr. Smith.
Yeah, Roger Smith, 218 West Ford Street. I'd like to ask the mayor if he read this article that was in the News Herald that said the Walleye Park brings in $1 million during their weekend, and I was wondering, how long is these condos going to exist before we get a million dollars back as a city? Uh, this, uh, this article, a lot of the information that came from it came from Councilwoman Nicole B. Frebes.
That was my thesis.
It was her thesis, right? And it was very interesting because according to the numbers, we had 21,000 people that came through the Water, the Waterworks Park and the Walleye Festival. Now, in this article, it also said that, uh, you know, the festival is still, would be in the city's future. I don't know how you're going to put one of these rides down on Main Street with a mayor comment on that.
Which question would you like me to address? You're asking a lot of questions I think you should answer.
Okay, one, the first question is that, uh, you know, this, this Waterworks Park and the festival we have, it creates, according to the study that she did, about a million dollars. How long are these condos and these little stores you're talking about exist before we can get that money back?
I wish I could give you that.
Well, is there going to be...
There's no possible way I can give you that.
Is there going to be a study on that, an outside study to determine that?
I think it's warranted, absolutely. I think it's absolutely warranted. It's all about time. You're still in the beginning stages of this, and you're asking me to answer questions that I can't even address at this point in time. Um, I can guess, just like anybody else, but I'm deciding what I want to do. I'm hoping to get more concrete numbers. I think that's what councils are looking for as well.
I, I think your question is predicated on the fact that your assumption is that the festival's going to somehow go away, and, and I don't think that's the case at all. And Main Street Port Clinton, who is, has been the sponsor of, of that event for the past half a decade, eight, nine, longer.
One of the things...
Sir, excuse me, excuse me. I believe they're, they're very much in favor of continuing the festival, and have actually, I believe, endorsed Mr. Rose's proposal and, and are looking forward to the improvements that can be made.
Well, one of the things that the Main Street has said is that they are looking for bigger sponsors, bigger entertainment, and bigger crowds. Now, Main Street is not the hit. We cannot put the rides down there. There's no space. The future of the Walleye Festival...
Sir, can I, can I ask you to clarify that? How many festivals have you planned?
How many festivals?
Yes.
Try, okay.
I'm just curious. I, I wonder, I want to know what you made that statement.
Have you been to the Walleye Festival?
I'm sorry?
Have you been to the Walleye Festival?
Sir, I was on that committee for 23 years.
Okay. How, where are you going to put those rides? Just a second.
A wide range of locations they could be placed.
Where?
North Madison Street, Waterworks Park.
North Madison.
Places in Waterworks Park that they could simply utilize.
Okay. Thank you.
Again, could, could you please clarify? You made that statement as if you had some knowledge and background in the, in the festival industry. How many, how many festivals have you planned, sir? Based on that, you, you made, you made a very distinct statement.
No, but I have, I have been...
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else this evening? Mr. Finkie.
Am I going to get in an argument with my goodness now, or what?
Depends on how stupid your answer is.
Oh! Very much. Shame on you.
Okay. Mr. Finkie, your response here...
Was that directed to me?
No. You didn't, uh, you didn't stand up to make that comment, so could you make the comment that you were going to make?
Well, I think some comment was needed on that little display there.
And my apologies.
Uh, question one. Has there been any activity for the negotiating committee lately, and if so, what?
I, I announced earlier, we're going to have a meeting with Mr. Rose on the 21st.
The negotiating committee or the council?
The negotiating committee. Counsel asked, counsel asked me at the last meeting to please announce the next time we're going to have a meeting with Mr. Rose. The next time we're having a meeting with Mr. Rose is on November 21st. We, and I, uh, that was just determined today.
Good. On candidate night, all the city council candidates were asked, "Will you give an honest, concentrated effort towards industrial development and educational development? Yes or no?" No candidate that night said no. Court looks forward to hearing the progress reports in the near future on both development areas, industrial and educational development. If the council spends half the time and half the money on these development areas that it has spent the last seven years on privatizing a public park, the community will benefit. So make us citizens proud.
Anybody else this evening? Mr. Yelkey.
Gary Yelkey, 117 Cedar Street. I have one question for the mayor about your planning at the zoning committee with Mr. Morgan on board. Is he still on that committee?
He is.
And do you feel that there's a conflict of interest with Mr. Morgan being on that planning and zoning committee and working for Mike Rose?
At this point in time, there's no work being done. Um, I would feel as though that there's potential for conflict there. At that point in time, I think it would be, uh, the smart thing to do is ask, ask him to remove himself from the committee at that time.
Thank you, Mayor.
I think that's a responsible thing to do.
Thank you, Mayor.
I agree.
Yeah, guys, Port Clinton, Ohio. Yesterday, or the day before, Chris Redfern was at the library discussing it, and he said how much time has gone by that Port Clinton has lost out on all the contracts they've put in. There's a nice article that, that shows how he was for the waterpark.
Anyone else this evening? Number Cortez, 211 West Third Street. Nicole, this is for you. Do you have a, a date for this town meeting for the disposed garbage disposal yet?
No, we don't have it. Be contacted soon and get that date, get it off everybody.
And will the bins back here in the parking lot, will those remain?
Yeah. Yeah, no, those will be, yeah.
This just deals with residential service.
Oh, so those will stay there?
Yeah.
Thank you.
So you could use the blue bag service, you know, for problems.
Right, right. A lot of times, we use these back here, too.
Yeah.
They're recycled, they're used.
Yeah, for regular garbage, you could use the blue bag service.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else this evening? Seeing none, I'll call... Hey, you've got to be a little faster, Mr. Phillips. Next time, I won't call on you, Nicole.
Gary Philbin, 121 Waller Street. I've got one question about these garbage dumpsters now that you're going to be going to. Uh, I was a handicapped person supposed to be dragging those things up to the curb where the machine's supposed to be to pick them up. Are we, or are we going to just park them out there by the, by the curb in a certain spot on your property? You'll park these two dumpsters there, then they'll just stay there?
It's similar to what everybody has now. We don't really...
There's the wheels on the bottom.
Yeah.
And I guess my question would be, how did they get it out there before?
Well, it's have additional...
How are they going to get it out there?
Well, how do they get it out there now?
It's the same thing, basically, that they have now, is a little redesign of the dumpster with a truck to...
They have somebody come over to do it. They're all...
They're not any different than what they're, they already are putting out there.
And they'd also have the option of a blue bag if they couldn't get the, you know, the dumpster out, or a container.
All right. If you got a...
It's the same size as it is now.
You won't be able to use them there.
Mr. Philbin, I can just say a little information that, that the council's not aware of. There's also three different sizes of totes that are available to fit your needs. So they drop down in size. Uh, if that's too much, you can go to the blue bags, so it's easier for you to do them.
I thought there was going to be one size, and that would be it?
Yeah, they have three different, I, I think it starts at 96 and drops down to 12 increments.
And we'll call for motion to adjourn this evening. Can you just have us body adjourn? Wait a second, please. Thank you, Mr. Phillips, always in favor. Thank you for adjourn.